Good morning. It's Wednesday, July 25th, 2018, about 10:01 a.m. This is a Curry County Board of Commissioners workshop. It's not a general meeting, but a workshop. We have, to my left, Administrator Schroeder, myself, Commissioner Huxley. We have on the phone Commissioner Gold, who is calling in. And further to the right, Council Huddle and Administrative Assistant John Jesuit. We have, again, called the meeting to order. Do we have any adoption or amendments of the agenda? Administrator Schroeder?
Nope.
Council Huddle?
I don't have anything to add. I'll be letting you know that I won't be here Friday afternoon, is all.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a little confused, you know, by several of these items that were on here in that we had an item listed, but there wasn't any information, you know, that was attached in the packet. But that said, and the fact that we have no amendments, we're gonna go right to Agenda Item Three, which is a Red Cross presentation by Carissa. And is it Hedic?
Hedic.
That was close. Okay. Let me see. You want to go up there, please?
I'll give you this.
Thank you.
And I'll leave the other two as well for the commissioners.
Okay. Do you wanna look at one of these? Well...
Be back.
John, you wanna, you wanna look at this? Well...
Thank you.
Carissa, do you have this information in a PDF that we could put onto our meeting notes?
Absolutely. Sure.
Okay. If you can just send that to me or to John, we'll post that to our website then as part of the minutes for this meeting.
Absolutely. Sure. Well, thank you, Curry County Commissioners and Administrator and Council for letting me speak with you today. My name is Carissa Hedic, and I'm the Executive Director for the Southwest Oregon Chapter of the Red Cross. Our chapter area encompasses 10 counties in southwest Oregon. So on the left-hand side of the packet, probably one page deep, there's a map that kinda shows how our territory is kinda divided and our coverage area. So the Red Cross, I mean, why it's important for the Red Cross to meet with the local government officials is to let you know about the programs that we offer and then how we support your communities in times of disaster. So, most people think of Red Cross, they think of blood and flood, usually. I work on the chapter side of Red Cross, so people ask me a lot about blood and vice versa. And we do manage 40% of the nation's blood supply, which is a lot of blood across the country. And I pulled some numbers just to share with you our involvement of blood collection in Curry County. And we donated, last fiscal year, so fiscal year 18, we collected 715 units of blood within Curry County. Mostly do mobile blood drives with the blood buses or either indoor setups. And we do engage youth in this process, and we host blood drives at Gold Beach High School, Brookings High School, and then we also do two community blood drives in Brookings as well as Gold Beach. So, the reason why that's important is because, you know, the youth between the ages of 18 and 24, they manage 20% of the nation's blood supply between those six years. And why it's especially critical to host blood drives in the summertime is when kids are not in school and we can't collect 50 to 100 units per blood drive, then we have to make up the difference with community blood drives or having a corporate group sponsor. And if you are going through leukemia or cancer treatment, you need platelets and plasma and burn victims and preemie babies, they need blood products. And even if you were to drive out of here, cross the road, get T-boned, you could be in the hospital and needing to receive 40 units to 100 units of blood because of internal bleeding. And there's just things that you just don't expect, and that's why the Red Cross is here. And during times of natural disaster, for instance, when we had the winter storms out east earlier this year, they had to cancel hundreds of blood drives because their staff and the donors couldn't get to the blood sites. So, the Red Cross, using our national network, we were able to bring blood products from other parts of the country to the east coast to fill up their hospitals. Before Hurricane Harvey made landfall, we pre-deployed 1,000 units of blood into Houston, knowing it was gonna take two to three days before anything could get in there, and we stocked up the hospitals with 1,000 units of blood to kinda ride them through the storm. So that's why it's important that we have a steady and regular blood supply. So I encourage you, when you do see that blood sign saying "Red Cross is donating blood", it takes an hour. And so we really appreciate, and you can donate, really, every two months, every 56 days. And the really neat thing with Red Cross is that you're notified about two or three weeks afterwards where your blood went. So I donated on June 29th, and I found out that my blood, that my unit of blood went to Hillsborough, to a community hospital. So that's kind of a neat thing that Red Cross does. Another thing that Red Cross, our number-one disaster, people think of us is like the tornadoes and the hurricanes, and especially now the wildfires. But our number-one disaster that we respond to locally is single-family house fires. So that is our number-one across the whole country. And how the Red Cross responds to that is that we are notified by the fire department that someone's been affected, they don't have any resources or a place to go. Our volunteers show up at the scene. I've done, I think I did about 60 fires in one year when I worked for the Red Cross several years ago in a small county area. You show up at the scene, we give them a client assistance card, we upload funds onto that card, and the clients can choose, do I need to buy pajamas or do you need to buy shoes? They can make their choice of what type of things will help them in their recovery process. And then, as well as, 'cause like your most basic needs is, where am I gonna sleep? What am I gonna eat? And what am I gonna wear? Those are the three things that is gonna run through someone's mind when you just see your house up in flames. And the Red Cross shows up, we're required to show up within two hours of those disasters and provide them that assistance, and we do some follow-up casework. So we're a bridge over the river for two or three days, and then we get them connected to get them stabilized to kinda make their next steps. Another thing that the Red Cross started to do about four years ago is we do so much on the response side of Red Cross, we wanna do more on the prevention side. So we've been installing free smoke alarms, and also, I think on the first page of, on the right-hand side, there's a flyer there that has a number, it's a hotline number, where you can call and request a smoke alarm, and then our Red Cross volunteers will call that person and say, okay, we're available on Tuesday between 2:00 to 4:00, can we come to your house and install the smoke alarm? So we have done that. And in Curry County, we installed, only just last year, we only did about 14 smoke alarms. But across the region, within the four, across the region since we kicked off this campaign, we've done over 19,000 smoke alarms. So we have to kinda target our areas. We do have a really strong base of volunteers. A lot of them came to us last fall during the Checkco Bar Fire. So we had a lot of local Red Crossers, plus new people that came to say, I wanna help out with these efforts. And so those volunteers, I actually sat with them when we had our Disaster Academy in Salem, and there is a group of like six or seven of them that are really, really engaged. And so they've been getting additional training, and they've also gone out to deploy on other relief operations, which is great. So they go and deploy for two weeks at a time, and then they come back and have those added skills. So this is something that we would like to share with you, you know, posting in your minutes, posting on your website, promoting the fact that we do have this service. We have the volunteers here able to do it, we just need to get the word out there so more people know about this and we can serve them. We, across the country, the reason why Red Cross did this is because we, it's the number-one cause of death, is home fire death, and that's something in large part is preventable. So in certain areas, when we did our Sound the Alarm campaign, we focused in Sutherland, Madras, and Portland as the three big communities, and this was like a highlight. So we do this year-round, but we just focus specifically on three communities in April and May. We installed over 1,200 smoke alarms in those three communities. And we focused on certain mobile home parks, you know, neighborhoods that are considered more at risk because of the elderly, lower-income children, mobile homes, they're just the type of construction, they're more vulnerable to home fires. So we talk about, we install the smoke alarms that have the 10-year lithium battery. So even if you have a hard-wired alarm, it's like, I've lived in my house 20 years, I have a hard-wired alarm, I'm okay. When you push the button and it beeps, that means the battery works. But can it sniff out smoke when you're burning toast? That's the difference. So sometimes the sensors of the smoke alarms, usually if they're more than five to seven years old that you've installed it, they're kind of expired, they do have life expectancies. And the newer smoke alarms that we're installing have a lithium battery that's built into the smoke alarm, so you can't remove it when you are burning toast. And, you know, we encourage you to put it right next to it or in other places around the house. We also talk about home fire safety, because cooking is the number-one disaster as well as smoke, you know, over juicing the sockets when you have too many computers and TVs plugged in. So those are areas where people don't realize that fires can start internally. And then also a fire escape plan. So when you go out the back door, your wife goes out the front door, and your kid jumps out the window, where's your rendezvous point? So if you don't see that your kid's outside, you're gonna run back in the house and look for your kid. But the kid's already at the mailbox. So that's where you need to talk, as a family, where are we gonna meet after this home fire, regardless of how we get out of the house? And you have less than two minutes to get out of your house because fire doubles in size every 30 seconds. So those are parts of the things, education tips that we share. So related to like the local disasters, Checkco Bar was a three-week operation for us last fall. And we had a shelter open in Brookings and Gold Beach within that area. Wildfires are ever-changing, you know, evacuation orders, we've dealt with several, like right now, we had some in Calamath, we've had some in Josephine County and Medford. So we have, I mean, I keep getting notices of like, we're opening a shelter here and there. A lot of them are just emergency shelters where people can come and get information. But also, you know, the, we are having more and more people stay as the evacuation levels expand. And again, that's an ever-changing scenario, and we work closely with the local government partners with that. So, what I wanted to do today is just kinda share with you our main lines of service. It is a blood donation, so we thank the Brookings community and the Curry community and Gold Beach for hosting the blood drives for us. We really do appreciate that. And then also, just sharing with areas about installing the smoke alarms, how we train our volunteers. We meet on a monthly basis. And another lesser-known service that we have is called the Services to the Armed Forces. And the Red Cross, we are a nonprofit organization. People think that we're quasi-governmental because we work alongside government partners. But with, that was our original line of service because it dates back to Clara Barton, the angel on the battlefield. So one of the main points that we do with Services to Armed Forces is that we do the emergency communication. So let's say mom and dad live here in Gold Beach, and their son's in Korea, and dad has a heart attack. The mom can't necessarily call the son up and say, hey, honey, come home, dad's in the hospital. The military is like, we need a Red Cross message to verify that. So mom calls the Red Cross, we call the county hospital, and we talk to the attending nurse and physician, we get the diagnosis, we type up the message and send it to command, and then they decide whether the service member comes home. So that way, because the Red Cross and we're neutral and independent, we can verify that. So that's our key line of service. And then also with, the military came to us because of the issues of veterans getting, having difficulty readjusting to civilian life after multiple deployments, including National Guard. We are offering reconnection workshops where our mental health workers are certified and facilitating these two-hour, family-based sessions to talk about opening the communication and helping the readjustment to ease in that process. So those are just a few of our programs. I included a couple packets in there. The things, like the five things to know about Red Cross and our five lines of service, it's really interesting to kinda read through that if you have a choice. And I'll give you all my business card, and, you know, I just wanna have just a connection to you, knowing that it is wildfire season, it is, we are, we do live in the land of Cascadia, we do advocate for preparedness. So we are partners in this, and I just wanna have an open lines of communication with the local governments. You have any questions? Yes?
Just thank you very much. During the Checkco Bar Fire, your people from Medford and all over were just tremendous to work with and always, always early to get where they needed to be. And fire meeting less than a week ago, I met two of your people from Medford that made a really good presentation, so...
Good.
I didn't know you were Executive Director, so that's nice to know, and thank you.
Yeah. No, it's my pleasure. And, you know, I read, I cover 10 counties, so I kinda have to plan my travels accordingly. But your immediate chapter, there's a disaster program manager that works at a Medford and covers the six counties, five or six counties here in southern Oregon. So his name is Dole King, he's retired fire chief from Sutherland, longtime Red Cross volunteer, he knows Red Cross, he loves his job. So he's the one who's working with the Curry County volunteers. And also to let you know, at the Curry County Fair, we do have a Red Cross booth where we are recruiting for more Red Cross volunteers. So we are alive and well here.
The fair is officially open, that's why I'm 15 minutes late.
Ah, good.
Thank you again.
Absolutely. And I will give you a couple business cards here, so, all right.
Thank you, Carissa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is item number four. Rich Christensen on equipment purchase.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have some extra copies of some of the paperwork I'm using if you would like to have that, to see while I'm going over these items.
Now, this is... Do you put this in front of the, with the Commissioners?
Yesterday.
Huh? Okay. Do you have this?
Uh, it's in my office.
Yeah.
So Mr. Jesuit did a good job.
Before we start on here, I just wanted to highlight for the Commissioners that he's gonna be explaining four separate pieces of equipment he's recommending for the road department that are budgeted, the three of them are budgeted and one of them is not. So if we feel there's direction or support from the Commissioners for the one piece of equipment which is not in the budget, there'd have to be a supplemental budget process to go through, to approve that before we would bring it back to the Board of Commissioners for that.
Rich, I do have a question. Primarily, these, this equipment was for the chip seal, is that correct?
Um, not all of it. The brose broom would be for the chip seal, the one that was not in this year's equipment replacement budget. And it wasn't even on our five-year plan. And the first one is the brose broom, and so I'll just get to it. In the last three years, we spent approximately $30,000 in repairs and maintenance on this piece of equipment. It's a go-to piece of equipment, it's used for chip seal and all our preventive maintenance programs with brush cutting and ditching for sweeping off the roads when we're done. It's pulled by utility truck, it's really not maneuverable or user-friendly, and so it's breaking down all the time. And as you know, we mobilize out, a couple hours to the north end of the county, it breaks down out there. We have to send a fleet maintenance up there to go work on it. We're wasting time, we're not being efficient and effective with our time, and standing by waiting for this thing to get fixed. And so, what I'm really looking, this just came on my radar here, like four weeks ago, 'cause there's another costly repair coming up on this thing, and I'm saying, stop. I don't wanna dump any more money in this thing. So, what I did is I went on the internet for a brose 350 broom, that's what the state uses, and we maintain that equipment for the state. So I'm looking to mirror what the state has so we don't have to double stock brushes and brooms and parts. And, but I was only able to get municipal pricing from the manufacturer. And I'm still working to see if I could get NJPA pricing or state pricing on this equipment to get it down. But with the municipal pricing for a cost of a trailer, and this one here won't be pulled, this one you actually drive down the road like a car, and it's highly maneuverable, and also there's gonna be a front blade on it, so when we, in the wintertime when we have all these little slips or slides on our, gravel on our roads, it'll be able to blade them off and then broom right behind it, so it's gonna be really good for that as well. So we're looking, 'cause it needs a trailer, $81,000 for the cost of a trailer and the broom. And like I say, we spent approximately $30,000 in the last three years, and I have another good-sized bill coming up if we're gonna keep maintaining the current pull broom.
So I have a question, Richard. Uh, how much time are you, downtime are you having? How much extra are you having to spend as a result of this?
I haven't quantified that, other than Foreman telling me that it's been causing delays on projects. I haven't, I can get that information.
Richard, I...
What did you say, $30,000 in the last five years?
Three years.
Three years?
Yes.
Okay. And how much is the bill that you're gonna be spending, the big bill now, if you have to repair it?
At the current pricing that I have is $81,000.
No, I mean, to repair the existing machine.
Oh, I believe it's $1,600.
Richard, I have a question. When you're looking at these purchases, do these have to go out for competitive bids or are you using the equivalent of a state pre-approved purchase program?
I'm trying to use a pre-approved purchase program, either the National, NJPA, National Joint Powers Authority where it's nationwide quoting, or state. And that's how we did the last two pneumatic tire rollers. But this one, I neither have state pricing yet, or if it's available, or NJPA pricing. So I'm still working on that. I do have a CAT salesman that's working on that for me as we currently speak. As I said, this just kinda came across my plate here in the last few weeks, and that's, and I kinda put it a high priority on it because I can't just see, you know, spending $10,000 a year on a piece of equipment. This current equipment is pretty much held together with bubble gum and rubber bands, I think, because right now, a lot of the adjustment features on it don't function. So I mean, if we were to bring it back up to factory spec, I was just, I would guess we would be spending another $10,000 this year. I haven't gone that far on this.
So I have one other question, Richard. Would you be able to sell this second-hand to someone else, this existing piece of equipment?
Yes. And it's a common type of piece of equipment, but it may be just for parts. It wouldn't, I don't know that it'd be a high value.
But this is the one, this has not been budgeted?
Correct.
Okay.
Was not even on the previous Roadmaster's five-year plan.
And where, and if you're recommending purchasing this, where would the funds come from?
I would purchase it out of a cap outlay, and I think I could fit it into the current cap outlay budget, 'cause some of the items that I had received quotes for in that budget actually came in lower.
What would be the turnaround from ordering to receiving? Would you still be able to use it in this year's construction season?
Well, the CAT rental salesman, he's actually bringing one down next week for our chip seal program, that we could demo, use it on our chip seal for a demo. So a free demo, so staff could actually drive it, utilize it, and to get more information. So, I believe it's a common piece of equipment that if we were to move forward and purchase it, we would definitely, we'd, I'd say 30 days, 60 days, but we would definitely be using it for this next fiscal year's maintenance programs.
And you'll be chip sealing next week down on the Checkco River?
Correct. Monday and Tuesday, we're chip sealing three miles of South Bank/Checkco River Road.
So maybe we could demo a couple miles on the Agnes Road?
Yes, I, uh...
Lowry Canyon, whoa boy.
I just sent an email this morning, follow-up from our meeting with the new supervisor, Merv.
It kinda felt like you two connected last night.
Yeah. No, he's, uh, he's, uh, he makes things happen, he's my type of person. And so, I reached out to Paul Podesta, the road engineer, to see if we can do an IGA to kinda help with sweeping that road. I've received customer requests, like they have a triathlon event here in a couple weeks. They go, hey, road department, can you help us do this? We can't because it's not a county road, it's a US Forest Service road. So I'm reaching out to the US Forest Service to try to make an IGA where they would pay us to help maintain their road.
And for those of you who are just joining the conversation here, this particular issue is on South Bank Road going up to Agnes. Up to Lobster Creek is a county road that we maintain, and after that, it turns into a forest road. Correct me if I'm wrong?
That's correct.
And so there's been some issues up there, that there's some breaks and dips and some issues, but it's not, you know, so we have to create an agreement so that we can take our equipment up there and work on that road. That's what they're discussing.
Correct. We have to drive between our county roads in Agnes and our county roads here in Gold Beach, 20, I believe it's 21 miles of US Forest Service roads. And we drive by all their road slides, all their potholes, all their maintenance issues and rocks in the road, which cause us problems too. If we're able to just drop a blade down and push stuff off, we do it. But other than that, we do not spend any road funds on maintaining that road, and so...
Except first eight miles?
Just that first eight miles we own. And then after that, up in Agnes, we own again. And so I talked with Dan Crumley last night, and he also said that there used to be an IGA with the US Forest Service to help him in these matters. So I'm trying to bring that back to life, as I said, I sent an email out this morning.
Good. So this, this one's in process, basically?
It's in process, but it's not approved or authorized.
Correct. But it can't be here today anyway?
No.
Okay. So unless there's any other questions on this one, why don't we move to the, to the next one?
Okay. Okay, this next one is a 420 F2 CAT backhoe, and this was on the previous Roadmaster's five-year replacement plan for this year, and I put it in my plan as well. And this is part of the approved $650,000 in equipment for cap outlay that was approved by the Budget Committee this year. And this is replacing an older, worn-out backhoe that, all the hydraulics are worn, all the pivots and pins. When you go to utilize the backhoe, you stop the controls in the bucket, keeps going for another couple feet because everything, it's all worn out. And so, what I'm looking at doing on, with this, is this is another go-to piece of equipment that we use in our culvert replacement program. And this new piece of equipment's gonna have another couple of attachments to make it more efficient and effective with that. One is there's gonna be a compactor device that goes on the backhoe, so when you're backfilling excavations, instead of having someone down there with a hand tamper, a power tamper, this equipment has a vibrator that just pushes down on that rock and compacts it very fast. And then it also has an attachment for breaking through thick asphalt, and like a jackhammer. So instead of a person with a 90-pound jackhammer, you have this backhoe with this big massive hydraulic breaker that we could also use when we have landslides. In the past, we've had landslides that were so ma, the boulders were so massive that we could not break them or lift them or move them because they were the size of a pickup truck. So, this backhoe would have those other two pieces of equipment as part of it.
Is that attachment a point, like a point attachment on that thing?
Yes.
That hammers away at rocks?
You can get multiple attachments, but we're, we're going with the point.
Okay.
And, but they do have one that's a wedge.
So that can do concrete or boulders or asphalt?
Correct.
Got it.
And so that's a piece of equipment. With, is the trailer and the hoe is all under that National Joint Powers Authority pricing. That's already been pre-bid. So in the past, we've gone with that and not reached out for three bids because it's already been done nationally.
But it's, it's, it's been approved, you're working on it. When you come back with final proposal or proposals, then you just bring it back to the board for, for approval, correct?
Yes, it's on next week's, uh, agenda.
For the first?
On the first.
Okay.
And the next one is, uh, Craft Co., a crack sealer. And this was on the previous Roadmaster's five-year equipment plan. And I also have it on my plan for this year. And this is something that we've never had. This is a piece of equipment that's designed for preventive maintenance to get longer life out of our roads. And how that works is a lot of our roads have linear cracks in it. And you, you'll notice like when you go down the state highway, there's like rubber lines everywhere on the highway. But what the state's doing is sealing off these cracks so water cannot get into the road base. Once water gets in the road base and heavy traffic goes over it, the road will, and there's water, it'll start pumping. And you may have seen it in the winter time where you go down a road and there's mud coming up through the asphalt. And so eventually that leads into alligator cracking, and now you have a pothole. So this piece of equipment be for preventing the deterioration of the roads to where it is going to be a corrective repair. So do preventive maintenance to save money from future corrective repairs. And, um, it's what I was used to earlier in my career when I worked for City of Centerville. That was part of the main road maintenance program. So I agree with the previous Roadmaster that we should get this equipment. And it is in our budget, and it is at NJPA pricing.
Richard, is this a piece of equipment that basically kind of spits out a hot mix of mixture of like a oil tar with some pebbles or rocks?
No, it, it, it has like a hot rubber oil mix that, it, it just pulled by utility truck. And it, it requires two operators. One, there's a high-power air compressor where the first operator blows out the crack to get it clean as they can. And then the second operator follows behind the trailer. It has an auto-load feed that drops these hard rubber blocks of rubber into the melting pot. And then it goes through the melting pot into a wand that the operator falls behind. And he just fills a crack with this wand. It has a little squeegee on it. So you just put in what you need to fill that crack. And then it seals that crack so water cannot get in your road base. And how I would use that equipment is that before we, we have like a fi- a ten-year plan, no, excuse me, a five-year plan for chip seals and overlays. What I would do the, the year before that chip seal overlay, we would go in there and crack seal that road. So that way it would, uh, be done before the chip sealed because if you don't fix the crack, it'll come through again and, and water will get through that base, even if you overlay.
How many miles of road does the county maintain?
We maintain two-hundred miles of paved roads and twenty-four miles of gravel roads.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay.
Uh, I just have one question, Richard. Um, what's the life of these machines?
With good preventive maintenance, uh, I, I believe we get fifteen, twenty years. The, the thing that we're doing now is we follow a CAT Caterpillar program with our equipment. And what we do is during different cycles, maintenance cycles, we, we take oil samples from all the different hydraulic and transmissions and engine oils. And we send them to Cat- we take, we have these special sample balls and we send them to Caterpillar. And they look at them to see if there's any wear and tear of any of the components in that section of the equipment. So you could prevent like a catastrophic failure. And, uh, so with good preventive maintenance, just like preventing a road, you do the same with your equipment. You get more life out of it. The other good thing that I'm doing is that I'm reorganizing the shop so that our storage, uh, buildings can hold our equipment indoors because we live in a highly corrosive environment. And the salt air here along this coastal area, it really attacks our equipment. So I'm looking at storing our equipment better. But I'm also looking at that we've already started maintaining our equipment better, using the CAT program. But also what I'm looking at doing is we don't have a equipment washing program where we wash all that salt, air spray, fog off our equipment. And it just builds up, builds up, builds up. And so we have a pressure washer station that isn't user-friendly that I would try to, uh, make user-friendly. And maybe have some kind of, uh, where, maintenance program where we wash our vehicles every time they go into service, that they not only service the vehicle, but they wash the vehicle before they put it back out in the field. So I, I think, you know, we may get fifteen, twenty years. Uh, we do have some equipment that I have on, um, on next year's. I'm actually placing on next year's equipment replacement plan. One's forty-four years old, another one's twenty-nine years old. So we do have some very old equipment.
Well, I'm glad to hear that you're working on deferred maintenance and, and putting money aside to, uh, take care of these equipment needs.
Thank you.
Any questions on, uh, on that? Last one?
Do I go a little over then?
Yep. Okay, this last one is on, also on the, uh, five-year plan, but it was not on the previous Roadmaster's plan. But it was on my updated plan that I made this year for the budget. And the reason why I want this piece of equipment is we spent four-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars on asphalt blade patch repairs on slippings, slides all over the county. This is where in the winter time that along these canyons and river roads, the road just kind of slips out. We got to come in there and, uh, ha- put asphalt in to bring them back up level. And in the winter time, we're held hostage to, uh, local asphalt vendors because they're not open because it's not a good time to make asphalt. And so there, some of these, so there's a high cost for buying the asphalt. Asphalt keeps going up in price. The other thing is every time we put asphalt on these roads, some of these roads have like seven, eight feet of asphalt in them. And we're putting more and more weight on these roads. And you can see it in the annual costs for buying asphalts that is doubling. The last three years it's doubled. Uh, three years ago was eighty-five thousand dollars. And that, and it has to do with how many tons we're buying, not just that the cost of asphalt's going up. Last, uh, two years ago, we spent a hundred-and-sixty thousand. Last year, we spent four-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars. And it's just, it's getting worse. And so I'm looking at buying this piece of equipment with a trailer for a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. I really believe that if we had this equipment this year, we could have saved easily that amount of money in asphalt repairs. And also that we could have provided more timely customer service. We could have been on their journey on the spot with less of staff and equipment, grind off, uh, the upper edge of that slip failure. Because a lot of times they're like two, three inches. Sometimes boom overnight, it drops six inches. But you got seven feet of asphalt under there. So the idea is this drop, grind off that top edge and taper it, put a rough road sign up. It's back in service. And we do that all winter, and we don't have to buy this asphalt anymore, especially on our lower-use roads, like Jerry's Flat Road, high use. You know, we'll have to pave it more. But some of these roads are very low use with very low customers. And we're paying this high cost for asphalt in those. What the vision would be, instead of patching them five times every winter, we'd grind them five ti- four times and patch them the last time. And I, I believe we could save thirty percent of our asphalt costs, which would easily cover, like this year would have covered the cost of this equipment in one year. So we'll be saving money in future years.
So this piece of equipment will come out and grind off that, uh, grind off the edges, smooth that out. And then there's a broom attachment that will sweep up the items and get it off to the edge?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyce? When you said seven feet, did you mean seven inches thick?
No.
Seven feet of pavement?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's areas that we've been blade patching them for so many years that-
Seven feet deep?
Correct.
Oh, I had no idea.
Yeah.
That's shocking. Okay.
Yeah, because we-
Airport in the North County has five or six feet, you know, by design, just to take the load of the aircraft.
Yeah.
Uh, that's with no repaving, so.
Yeah, no, these ones here, every time the road goes down a little bit, throw more asphalt on it. Goes down a little bit more. And you're doing that five, six times a year, adding two inches here, two inches there. And over the last fifteen, twenty years, you have a lot of asphalt.
Could you remind us again, remind the public, uh, the local asphalt vendors, you say, are not really accessible or available in the winter? Who, who those companies are?
Our two nearest vendors are here in the South County is Tidewater. And in the North County, we get it from Kuzbay just over the county line. Or a little past that, we get it from, purchase it from Knife River. But both these organizations uh, make, everybody paves in the summertime. That's when you do paving. In the winter time, there's not too much paving. So they wait till there's enough small projects where it pays to heat up a plant. And then it might take us two, three weeks before they do that. And, and then so at, during that time, we throw some base rock on the slip and slot where, where the uneven. And we have to go back there all the time, daily in some places like Jerry's Flat to re-smooth that out to keep it safe for traffic to go over. So it's, um, it's very difficult logistically in winter time to do this. And then also, winter time, it's cold. This winter, we had snow and ice. And so when you're trucking asphalt all the way from Kuzbay or Brookings to, um, Central, that cold air's attacking your asphalt. It, it's in the bed of a truck, this cold air's going on it. And it, and you're not getting, when you, some of these places where we get to are way back on these roads, you're out, you're losing asphalt temp, which also makes it not good. Makes it hard to work with, and you don't get a good product many times when you're done. So this little piece of equipment here is going to, I believe, saves a lot of money and allow us to give better customer service.
Any other questions or? Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you.
Next item is item five, Sheriff Ward, consolidation of dispatch with the city of Brookings, a study?
Morning. So we've been talking about consolidation for years and, and this last couple of years, you know, with the relationships that I've, you know, established with Brookings and with the chiefs, with the chief and everything that, uh, they're on board with us about consolidating dispatch services. All, all in all, what we're trying to do is trying to get it out in its own district where every, there's a user board and everybody pays into this user board for nine-one-one dispatch. But, uh, that's baby steps. But, uh, they are in agreement to, uh, look at the possibility of consolidating our dispatch centers in, uh, from Gold Beach, or from Brookings to, uh, the sheriff's office. In order to do so, uh, you know, we don't have, really have the expertise. We've looked into it. My, the captain and the sergeant have looked into, gone to different dispatch centers and checked out, uh, how they did it. But in order to have it all done in, in, in a package of what it would take, how much it would cost, uh, moving people around, things like that, it was suggested by the past, the city administrator, Gary Millman, that, uh, there should be a study done on it. And he reached out to the Portland State University, College of Urban and Public Affairs, and got an estimate of what it would take to, uh, have them do a study on what it would cost to consolidate. The, and I believe you have a, a copy of that in your packet. It's the total project cost for them to do the study is thirty-five thousand dollars. Now, Brookings has agreed to pay half that if the county would pay the other half. So it's roughly seventeen thousand five hundred per, for us to do the study on that. I would suggest that, you know, it be done. So if we do consolidate, it's done right. And, um, and basically minimal cost. Keep in mind, this year, you know, we're at the end of life in our dispatch center, uh, and our, and all the equipment has to be replaced. We have four consoles and, uh, it's roughly about eighty thousand dollars per, per console. So we're looking at, what, three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars to repay, replace our, our dispatch console, make sure that, because they're, they're at the end of life and there won't be any, uh, parts for them. So that's my suggestion. Uh, you've been able to, you've got the packet and you've been able to read the project cost. And so I think, uh, if we have any other questions for me, um, we can bring it back to a, uh, discuss it at a POC meeting.
I just have one question, Sheriff. Um, where would the seventeen thousand five hundred come from? Or would it come out of your budget?
Uh, well, I don't have that in my budget. Um, we'd have to figure out what to do. It's a county project, not the sheriff's office. It's communications for all, um, fire departments and ambulances and, and other agencies. So uh, it's just a discussion.
If you were in favor of doing this study, we would come up with a, uh, a recommendation for where the, uh, money would come from and the supplemental budget for it. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Gold?
It does. We're going to have to dig for the money in sound light.
Any other comments for the sheriff, Commissioner Boyce?
I know it's a long time coming and, uh, in or, in having two piece ops in the county, we don't have the opportunity from, uh, you know, for outside monies and things for assistance like from OEM. If we, we consolidate on the one piece op, you know, OEM would, you know, help out with, uh, some funding issues, I would imagine. So. Well, through grants and things.
Commissioner Boyce?
If Brookings is on board, including the new public safety officer, police chief, then you're, I think you're definitely headed in the right direction. Thirty-five thousand sounds a little bit high with the tower issues we have, but maybe it's the wisest route we can go right now.
Well, we've been discussing this for over fifteen years. And finally, it's, uh, to the point where, you know, relationships that we built that we all agree that it's time to do this, if at all possible.
And also Sheriff, you mentioned in the meeting yesterday that, um, it was more probable that you could get grants and so forth if you were to consolidate all of this into one county. Is that true?
Well, that's what my impre- uh, what my information is that I've received that, uh, OEM would, would help out with, uh, the funding issues, I believe. If it was just going down to one piece op, if we have one piece op in the county, put it that way.
Any other, any other questions? Commissioner Gold?
Um, I guess my main concern about all of this, I don't know how many towers Brookings have, but I know our towers are antiquated and whether we're going to be responsible for all of it, maybe this will come out in the study, I hope.
Well, I would imagine that would come out in the study. Brookings has one tower in their, in their parking lot at the police department. The rest of the towers belong to the county. Their tower, um, is basically for their own communication within the, the south end of the counties for paging out fire and ambulances and, and their own, um, police departments. They can communicate through us, uh, on our towers. So- They can communicate through us, uh, on our towers, so... I, I do know one thing, that they, they would require that we had a plan to make sure that we replaced our dispatch equipment, had, and fixed the towers, and make sure they're operational, and that they're not, had to stick a ton of money into it after we consolidate.
And I think it's really important that once, if we go this route, that everybody that is, uh, contacted for this, all the cities and so forth, part of that fee should be, uh, a maintenance and replacement fee.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, uh, the next item is item number six. This is, uh, South Coast Development Council, Sam.
Okay, in your, um, in your packets are a couple of different things. There's been a, um, a scope of work and project that SCDC has worked on in the fiscal year seventeen eighteen. In addition to, there was another update on, uh, work they've been doing on, uh, Southern Oak Death in Oregon Forest. I thought that was interesting for you to read. But I've asked Sam to come up and, uh, talk about, uh, what we, uh, you know, what we want to bring forth to them for an assignment, uh, what kind of things we want them to work on. And then we would develop a contract, bring back to the Board of Commissioners for review. Previous years, contracts have been signed, uh, in August and September. So it's time their contract ended basically in, uh, June thirtieth. And we could go a number of different routes, but we thought we'd bring up Sam to talk about this, and Carolyn for input also, so...
All right. Um, first, I'm, I'm gonna start with, uh, Sue, I miss ya. But, uh, so let's, let's, let's talk about some of the things that, that we have been doing over the last...
Excuse me, just for the record, you wanna introduce yourself?
Uh, Sam Baugh with South Coast Development Council.
Thank you.
And one, one of the things that we have decided as the, as the Development Council is to better help, uh, Curry County, is we, we hired a individual to cover specifically Southern Curry County, meaning Gold Beach and Brookings, and that's Judy May Lopez. I think most of you at least know of her, if, if you have not met her in person. And we, we've done that so we can best help with the, in, instead of having a lag period, that we would have some, uh, companies would give us a call and say, hey, I need, I need some help. And so we'd say, hey, okay, this is the next time I'm going to be down in, in your area. And to better, uh, get over that hurdle, we, we have Judy May here, so that she's a little bit quicker on the response time. Um, but, uh, some of the things that we accomplished, you guys have seen the scope of work, some of the, the things that we have done. Uh, many of our projects are still going on and still functioning. Uh, we're, they're still being worked towards. For, uh, one, one of the major things that we're, we're still, sorry, there's a fly attacking me. One of the major things that we're still working on, and I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Boyce in helping with this, is the economic impact of the Checo Bar Fire. And, uh, that report was scheduled to be released last week, but it, uh, we had one of the funders that wanted some things that slightly altered, and so we're, not altered, but more in-depth, uh, discussion, so that, that has been put back again in another couple of weeks. So I'm, I'm open up for questions, and what is it that you wanna see from, as far as your economic development for Curry County?
Commissioner Boyce?
Well, just, uh, having your involvement in the Southern Oak Death issue, uh, is very good. And, uh, we all need to be educated on that, and it's a complicated thing. And funding, of course, is a huge part of that.
Right.
It's gotta be all hands on deck to keep this in Curry County, it's been said over and over. But it is expanding, and, uh, within the last eighteen months, discovering the new strain, as you know, Mr. Baugh, uh, the European strains, that, that could, uh, really affect all of our evergreens conifers. Uh, it's, it's a little bit scary. And so, yeah, just repeating, all hands on deck to figure out. And we're starting, you know, between David Rocksmith and Senator Merkley, uh, two-point-three million. And we, this has been budgeted for the next year, and we need to increase that. And part of that, we've been going around Southern Oregon and trying to get other counties involved, even, uh, you know, with the one nursery, uh, the Oregon Nursery Association only gave two thousand. That wasn't much, but it was, it was a great portion for what they could afford to do. And it demonstrates to the state and the federal people that we understand the seriousness of this, and we'll do everything we can. And so, uh, when Representative Brock Smith goes back for the emergency board in September, we really need to kind of be united, and so I really appreciate your involvement in this, and it's, uh...
And, and we have written, uh, uh, several letters of support on, on when you're going towards the funders. Cause yeah, I mean, most people, if they, if they're not dealing with it almost on a daily basis, they don't understand what the scope and magnitude of that is, if, if it does spread additionally. And so, yeah, that, that puts, you know, every county surrounding Curry County in jeopardy of, of losing export, uh, material.
Yeah, and it's a lot of, even though it was discovered eighteen years ago, it, we're still learning, and a lot of folks are not aware, so this is gonna help very much.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Gold?
Not at this time.
You, you mentioned, you know, the renewal of the contract. Has any order of magnitude been addressed, or any, you know, draft proposals for scope of work, or requests for scope of proposals?
Yeah, there's a couple of different avenues we can go before we come back to a meeting. And, and Carolyn has discussed a couple of these. One is just basically re-upping some of the, the contract with some of the work that's continuing. Um, correct me if I'm wrong with that, Carolyn. Um, and then another avenue would be to basically go on a project-by-project basis. Basically, is say, uh, we would basically look at individual things at a time, develop a scope of work, have an overriding contract that would have addendums attached to it that would, we would direct them to do, to do work. I, I do have to be honest, it's like, given the newness to this position and the workload, I have not had, uh, extensive opportunity to review, uh, the contract or the work that is needed in the county concerning the economic development area. Um, so it's hard for me to weigh in on that at this time. So, um, I, I don't know, Carolyn, do you have any thoughts on that, or...?
Um, yeah, I do, if I could. Um, there's a couple of things that Sam didn't mention that I'd, I'd like to add that was completed this last year. Uh, um, they engaged in the Regional Tourism Network, uh, project for Curry County. We're working with Coos, um, Coastal Douglas, and Coastal Lane Counties on that. And, um, it's really a regional effort on tourism, so that was a part of the work that they represented us in as well.
Excuse me, what was that name again? I already forgot.
It's the Regional Tourism Network.
Thank you.
Um, and they also, um, Sean had put together the applications for the Opportunity Zones, um, and has provided a lot of support for the Enterprise Zones, and those are all related to tax, uh, property tax deferral for new businesses for certain periods of time. So I'd, I'd like to toot their horn a little bit, because they did work on that last year, and that was helpful. Much of the work that they, they did was, um, really about engaging new business owners to expand their business or bring new businesses into the area. And, um, the tourism businesses were a part of that as well. And so what Clark and I talked about was potentially having a base contract, like you mentioned, um, to keep working on those things. And the bigger projects, maybe, that we might wanna look at, that we had included in last year's contract, that some progress was made, but not completed. Uh, one was, um, an industrial commercial property inventory throughout the county. Um, that would then go on the Business Oregon website. Um, it would be expanded into your website as well at SCDC. And, um, the opportunity then to reach out to those different property owners would be much more evident. We could provide information to people on what the land uses are, what development potential would be, that kind of thing. The board talked about this in, a year and a half ago, and it was something you were very interested at that time. You also talked about, uh, the potential for a county forest that was included in the scope last year. And, um, some of the base foundation research was created for that, and it's really ready to now move on, if that, what, if that's something we would wanna do under a separate agreement. And then there was also a good discussion about a potential film commission. So that too could be a separate addendum to a base agreement. So, uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Just a quick question, uh, from, from memory. Originally, this, these agreements, or this agreement began at ten thousand, as I recall, and, uh, expanded to twenty thousand?
It did.
Round numbers, round numbers, earlier, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that's what we're, we're working under now, correct?
That's what we worked under last year. And I, I think it's fair to say that this whole economic development, um, position that the county is taking is evolving. At one time, three years ago, you had an Economic Development slash Administration Director. Um, and you had, I think, like a five-hundred-dollar-a-year contribution to SCDC. When that position was eliminated, and much of the, a lot of the work was handed down to my shop, um, the, the first contract that was bigger to SCDC was put in place for ten thousand dollars. There really wasn't much of a scope of work, it was very, it was very thin. Well, then, the next year, we came up with a nice laundry list. I had a workshop here with the board, and you went through a whole series of things that you were interested in seeing. And, um, so that work scope was fattened up, and the budget was expanded. I think now we're at a place where we've, we've kinda gone through the bumps in the road of, you know, what we would like to see, um, what SCDC with their current staff can provide. And, uh, I think we can come to kind of a happy medium between just doing a blanket, very generic agreement, and then an agreement that's so specific and so long that perhaps it's not doable all in one year, or under one agreement. So I like the idea that, that you brought up, um, Clark, about, you know, a base agreement and then a separate agreement if we want special projects, like the community forest or the, the industrial commercial inventory. So those would be my suggestions.
And so what we're, as staff, we're just asking the commissioners to say if they have any specific requests, um, you know, let us know, give us feedback. Staff will go back and develop something and bring it back for your consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gold, did you have any questions?
No.
Commissioner Boyce?
Just, Mr. Baugh, if you could introduce our South County...
You bet. Judy, would you like to come on up here real quick?
Say hello.
Hello. I decided that I didn't want to retire and stay in Brookings and do nothing, so I'm now working part-time for SCDC. And, uh, the way that I was raised, let me tell you for just a sec. Uh, if you live in the community, you give in the community, right? It's just that simple. And, uh, so that's what I'm doing, helping out where I can. Oh, I'm Judy May Lopez.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So, yeah, Judy, Judy May actually has a very extensive history, uh, in the Brookings area. Uh, she was Marketing Director for Checo Credit Union, uh, back when it was Checo Credit Union, right? Checo Federal. And then she has, uh, been Chair for the Checo Activity Center and several other nonprofits down in the area. So I got to, uh, meet her through Rotary, where she was Chair, or President of, uh, the Brookings Chamber of Rotary last year. So that's how I got to know her, and tried to pull her out of retirement, because she was, she was, you know, floundering and all wayward and stuff, so...
I didn't think I was floundering.
She didn't have enough stuff to do, so I, I pulled her out of retirement to, specifically to help here. Cause I think she has the connections.
Thank you, Mr. Baugh. How far did you go back with the credit union?
Um...
You remember Pat Widmer, I'm sure.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, uh, Gary Gores was President, yeah. Um, Kurt Lunsford hired me back in, I moved to this area back in eighty-one. So about ten years later, I started with the credit union, so I was with them for, yeah, a long time. Thirty years.
That, that's incredible.
Okay, if there's anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
To... Agenda item seven, cellphone usage and drug testing.
Okay, this, uh, this issue is brought by, uh, Commissioner Boyce to my attention. This is something that staff has no recommendation or research on, because, uh, if the commission wants to, uh, direct this to become a policy, they should direct staff to come up with this. Uh, Commissioner Boyce would like to, uh, develop a policy of not allowing commissioners to use their cellphones during meetings. And so I'm just looking for feedback. If the commissioners wanna do that, they can give feedback to the administrator to say, let's develop a policy. Um, Mr. Boyce, do you have anything to add to that?
I think it's just a potential of a good policy and a good example for the public, and eliminate as many distractions as we can. And I know sometimes I'm tempted to grab the phone and, and see if I got critical text, but, uh, I think it's, I think it's a good, uh, good example to set for the public, and that's why I, uh, offered this as a potential for us as the public officials in the county.
Question for Commissioner Boyce, are you, you know, I have my cellphone here as, as a clock. I have used it for years as a clock. I turn this, all the messages, everything's off, and I use it as a clock. Is that what's been the, the, the impetus for? I, I don't see anyone else using, you know, with a, with a cellphone. And I've never heard, pardon me?
We're surrounded by clocks, plus on our computers, so there's three...
So that's the impetus for your...
Oh, I don't know if it's you, I don't, I have no idea if you're only using it for your clock.
Well, I just told you I was.
Oh, well...
So what I'm saying, is that, is that the, the reason behind your recommendation? Because I don't see, pardon me?
I'll just try and keep this light. I, I don't think you're suggesting that I'm, uh, suggesting that, wouldn't want you to be able to tell the time. You have other options here, so I don't know if it's valid that you're not using it during...
Okay, so that, your, your insinuation is that I am, is that correct?
I'm not insinuating anything, I ask you if it's valid. If, uh, it's obvious that, uh, it's important to you for a clock, correct?
That's what it is, correct?
We have options, do we not? On your computer?
Okay.
And on the wall, twice.
So you've, you've answered my question.
Thank you.
It has to do with my cellphone, which I will continue to use here as a clock. Do you have any comments, Commissioner Gold?
Commissioner Huxley, it has to do with anybody having a cellphone, not just you.
I would just say, I think we don't need a specific policy, because we can be adults and be courteous to one another.
That would be nice.
All right, so I, I think I have, uh, I think I've heard that there's probably not consensus to develop a policy on this. Is there, I think that's a correct assumption?
Yes.
Something wrong? Okay.
Could, uh, Commissioner Gold confirm that, please, that's her sense?
What was that?
Could you confirm that, uh, you agree with Commissioner Huxley, and you, you at this time do not see a need? I think that's what you said, I just wanna hear...
Well, I sit right next to him, and I, I agree with him, and that's all he ever uses it for, is a clock, so... I have no problem with that.
Well, how do you know, though, that he only uses it for a clock, I mean, okay? All right.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the, the...
I think you have a consensus, sir.
Yeah, there's not consensus, then we're going on. Okay, so the ne, the next item on the agenda, Commissioner Boyce would like to, um, discuss having commissioners voluntarily subject, subject themselves to random drug testing. Uh, given the fact that you're, um, elected officials, I'm not sure how that would work, but, uh, your, uh, your impetus or your desire for this, any comments?
Well, I think it'd be, uh, obviously would be a volunteer. Uh, through my Coast Guard license and river, uh, captain, it is, uh, routine and unannounced, and it's a good policy, cause we're responsible for an awful lot of lives when we, uh, when we're on a river. Uh, it's like driving a bus. Uh, I think it would set a very good example for the public, and, uh, I, I, I personally, I think it's a good business, and may even be appropriate for, uh, the future for us. All that this county's dealing with, all that we see around, uh, the communities, uh, mental health issues. I think it's, I think it's just good business, and that's the way I was raised, and that's what I believe, and so... And by the way, I passed all the... And by the way, I've passed all the drug tests for 45 years.
Well, I just have one question. Do you suspect that there's drug use on the commission? Is that the impetus for this?
No, that's not, that's not my, my business and I wouldn't, even if I did suspect that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't answer that. The issue is, do we want to let the public know that we are clear-eyed in all circumstances, on all occasions and clear thinking? It's, it's not an accusation to either Commissioner, Commissioner Gold. It might be a little bit inconvenient, but I think that's also what we signed up for. It's, it's usually, you know, I pay for it myself. I can be called twice in one week or I can be called once in four months. It's random.
So I have a question. Who's going to pay for it?
Well, I, I pay for it myself. That's just part of.
Okay, so you think we should pay for a drug test for ourselves? Even though we know we're not on drugs?
Well, the public doesn't know that and I'm saying that that's a small, a small price to pay.
Okay, I, I, so I have a recommendation on here. I think if this is not going to be a county reimbursed operation, I think any commissioner is free to do their own drug testing and pay for it and, and their commissioner notes just say, I voluntarily did this and, you know.
It's not random.
It's not random, you're right.
Yeah, so it's really invalid, so.
Yeah.
The, the whole thing is to avoid any kind of secrecy and just be transparent. As public officials, I think that's our responsibility and that's, that's what I believe.
I have one other question. Do you know of any other commissions that require random drug testing?
You know, working around the other commissioners around the, around the state, I think you're going to see that over time. I don't know of any other specific county policies that require or offer that option. But again, referring back to mental health issues, different areas of what we're dealing with, developing public trust, it, you know, I'm obviously getting a lot of resistance here, so that's not really what I anticipated, but if that's how you both feel, then, you know, maybe I'll bring it up again six months from now.
Have you asked that any, that all other elected officials do the same? That would be one question.
So we're, we're, we're the, we're at the top. This is our board. This is our.
That was not my question. My question.
I'm trying to answer it.
Was.
Thank you. I think it would develop an example, offer an example, and maybe that would generate some interest and some like-minded direction from other elected public officials. If not, let the public decide what they think is appropriate or not.
So you still didn't answer my question. My question.
No, I have not talked to any other public officials.
Okay, that was my question.
I think that that is around the corner, hopefully at some point.
What about criminal background checks?
Well, we all have, we all have to pass that to run for public office.
We do?
We have to. So you haven't had a background check? I've had plenty of them. Yeah.
Are you professing that, that criminal background checks be, be, let's say, not mandatory, what did you, what did you call it?
Voluntary?
Voluntary for all, for commissioners and all elected officials? What about, what about candidates for those offices?
So wouldn't you want your background exposed to the public if you're running for public office? So you haven't had one?
That wasn't my, my question. Let me repeat my question, Commissioner. Have, you know, are you, would you, are, are you also proposing criminal background checks that are, that are not done for elected officials?
All right, we're.
That's not on this proposal, but it might be a very good idea.
I, I'm just, that, that's not on the agenda. The agenda is basically, is there consensus to have, to develop a policy?
Well, I think it's related, Administrator Schroeder. I think these questions are definitely related. That's the reason I'm asking them. It's not that they're, they're in.
Is there anything on the agenda, sir, that says anything about criminal background checks?
So you're not?
Would you answer my question, please?
I'm sorry?
Is there anything on the agenda that references criminal background checks? And has that a proposal?
There are things that reference voluntary checks and I'm flowing that in to the next question to you. Are you, because clearly.
You still didn't answer my question. Is that on the agenda, sir?
You're of the wrong, you're of the wrong understanding that commissioners have to take criminal background checks.
I'm, I'm not suggesting it's mandatory. We're not even doing that. I did say that it's good business. So is it on the agenda? Can you answer that question and how is it related?
It, it's directly related. It's not on the agenda. It's a question that's arisen from me to you based on your other, based on your misunderstanding that commissioners now take a voluntary or take a criminal background check. They do not. Are you, would you suggest that they do along with other elected officials and?
If I made the wrong assumption that as.
Potential candidates for those offices.
Hang on.
That's my question.
Commissioner Boyce, Commissioner Boyce just wanted to talk about just the three commissioners.
He's got a great idea though.
Talking about just drug testing for the three voluntary drug. So the, these are, those are.
My question, Administrator Schroeder was to, not to you, it was to Commissioner Boyce.
I'm trying to just move this along.
My question is to Commissioner Boyce.
Yes.
So that's my question. Yes or no?
What is your question?
What's my question?
That I didn't know that background checks, criminal background checks are required prior to people filing for official public office. Is that your question?
Yes.
Okay. I did not know that wasn't required.
Okay.
In my, in my world, that would just be a common, almost a common courtesy and personal requirement.
Are you, are, would you, are you, would you recommend that that be done?
Not at this time, but I think it, I think it's good for discussion. And I'm glad you brought it up.
You answered my question, thank you. Counselor Huddle, you had your hand up.
Well, this was foreseeable, this level of discussion on this item. My question prior to the meeting was to Administrator Schroeder, and I haven't heard him bring them up to the board, but essentially, when I saw these items on the agenda, I, I said, how, how did you decide to put these items on the agenda? And he, he didn't think he could tell a commissioner that he couldn't put an item on an agenda. And I said, well, wouldn't it make sense to say, is the board interested perhaps during his administrative report? I've had a request to put this on a workshop. Is the board interested? And then not presume that we're going to talk about, just see if there's interest and then schedule a workshop. Again, it's, it's kind of, I think the county could benefit from direction from the board to Mr. Schroeder on, on how to put items on workshop agendas for the best use of the public and the county's time.
Well, if I may. That would suggest that you made a mistake by following my lead and my request and I'm going to stand firm against that. You don't have to agree, that's not your job. I didn't, we didn't have that discussion. You asked me some pertinent questions. I said, here's why. You put it on the agenda as elected public official. I appreciate you did. I don't want you taking the heat for me on this one. Fair enough. Thank you.
I, I, no, this, this is a general overall, regardless of this issue, this is an issue I think maybe I could, I could use the preference of the board, which is can any commissioner put anything on an agenda at any time for a workshop?
So now we're changing the agenda to add that as part of the discussion? Is that correct?
Nope, that would be something we would bring up at a future, at a future workshop. If people are interested in talking about that, we'll bring that up. So you're, that's a very good point, Commissioner Boyce, which is it's not on the agenda, so you're right, we should talk about that later.
And, and it sounds like that's going to help you in your job and give us all a better understanding?
Yep, yep.
Great, thank you.
So I'll bring that up at the next.
So this agenda item is, do we have a consensus before the Board of Commissioners to offer voluntary drug tests as the leading public officials of this county?
Not for me, you don't.
I think it's actually whether you have consensus among the Board of Commissioners to direct staff to develop a policy.
Commissioner Gold?
Spend a lot of time on it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
I'm really not in favor of setting up a policy, but if there's some instance where you suspect that one of the commissioners is using drugs, go to county council and maybe he can cut to us and discuss the problem with us.
There is no suspicion, Commissioner Gold, that's twice that I've offered that. Fair enough.
How come me? How come, Commissioner Gold, how come you picked out to go to county council if there's a suspicion of drug?
Because you're a legal person. You're supposed to know everything.
You're our go-to guy.
We can't go to the commissioner himself because we can't talk to him, so.
I see. Thank you.
Therein lies a big part of the problem.
Take one, take one and pass it down. All right.
Okay, so do we have any other comments on this?
I, I have, I, I have what I, understanding of direction from the commissioners.
Pardon me?
I have an understanding of the direction from the commissioners, which is we're not going to develop a policy.
Okay. That was a copy that he just passed on to me. Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to make. Okay, so then we're going to move to.
Item eight.
Agenda item eight, using Google for agenda preparation. Administrator Schroeder.
Okay. What you have before you basically is a couple screenshots from what I'm proposing to help save staff time. Right now, I, I find the packet process to be burdensome for John Jesuit to put together. As you saw, the last one was 300 and 98 pages long. It gets rather lengthy. It's, it's large enough that you can't email it out to people and sometimes people in the county have spotty internet coverage as, as it is, or they have limitations on what they can download. What I'm proposing basically is we would basically put items up on Google Drive. The first page of what you would see on your packet here is just lists, you'd have a meeting like July 18th. The second page, you look on the packet, it would list each individual item that's on the, that's on the agenda. And so if somebody was just interested in item number seven, they just have to download item number seven. And it wouldn't involve having to download 398 pages and then prusing through to get to page 127 to get to item number seven. I think, and it'll just save JJ a few hours at least every meeting of not having to do this. And it will be accessible on Google Drive. I have checked with our IT individuals. They say it's a very common thing for government agencies to do this. I've been involved with a government agency that's done this before. And so from a records retention standpoint, if Google were to go bankrupt and go away, the items would obviously be kept on our own servers so that they would be retained per our records retention operation. So this would be just something for staff, staff help. And I'm just looking to see if there's any, you know, I, I feel I probably can do this, but I just want to make sure the board doesn't have any objections to this.
Is there a way to get a technological demonstration of that? For instance, you've got some screenshots that are microscopically printed on a handout.
Yep.
Eloquently put.
What I, what I'm wondering is if, if, it, it might be a lot easier to understand what you're talking about if you were able to, whatever those screenshots are, wherever they came from, put them up on this TV and walk everybody through step by step what you're talking about. You mentioned it'd be beneficial to staff and I'm assuming you're talking about, you know, me as well, but I would just like to see a demo of it before, if it's easy to, if it's, if that's easy enough to do. I don't know how it works, but.
Yeah, I, I can just do that during my administrative report on the first. I can just bring that up. I, I have not worked on this computer here to log in. It's just basically the, what happens is we created a, we created a Google account with the, with the BAC address so that, that, that will carry forward regardless of who's working for the county. It's the same address, same login, everyone will carry through with it. And I can certainly, I can just demonstrate that in my administrative report. I'd like to maybe practice that before I do it live right now because I've never worked on this computer here.
Well, just to comment though, I mean, it's done, it's commonly done with different entities all over, all over the world, but.
Yeah.
And you mentioned, you know, that it was done where you came from. I'm sure it's, you know, I would suggest also, you know, you could just send us a link, you know, to the municipality, it doesn't have to be a municipality, but to a municipality that does it. It's not confidential, it's not restricted information. It's just be a website, it would be a link that anyone could go to, to tinker around with it, you know, in, in preparation for your presentation.
Okay. Yep, I, I'll, I'll put that together.
Or a couple or three or four different links.
I'll put that, I'll put that in my administrative reports on the first.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Boyce, did you have any?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
I just say, I think it's a good idea to make it easier for the public to access the, the packets without having to go through 500 pages to get to where you want to go. So I think it's a good thing.
County Council, did you want to?
No, I, I just.
On that? Your was, was a good point.
Right, I mean, it reminds me of when we did our GIS and the people from Lane County came in and they put our new map system up and they said, here's how you use it, and they walked you through it. I mean, I didn't think it, my idea was anything too out of the ordinary, that's all, so.
Okay, so we're going to go to agenda item nine, public comments and commissioner interaction. Administrator Schroeder.
So this is just for, I guess, my comments and we can go a couple different ways on this. You can direct staff to change your, your meeting decorum to address this and if not, you can just do, it's for your own consumption. I bring this to your discussion purposes for observing meetings I have attended so far. I've noticed commissioners engaging in, engaging with the public during the public comment period. Public comments are meant to give the public the opportunity to inform the Board of Commissioners of concerns they've had, items which they should be considered for future agendas, items which the public would like the Board of Commissioners to give direction to the administrator to research and bring back for consideration, and recommendations, opinions and feedback. Public comment period is not the time for commissioners to engage and dialogue with the public for a couple of reasons. Opening discussion on topics you have not noticed publicly ahead of time is not the standard practice. I quote a ORS Rule 192 dot 640, basically talks about the fact that you need to notice the items which you're going to be discussing. This is not to say you can't add things to an agenda, but as a general rule, opening discussion during public comments is ill-advised. The other reason is the public is for this policy, a policy sitting board has not done the research and their recommendations from staff regarding the issues which are going to be discussed during public comments. My recommendation is to limit dialogue to saying thank you for the comments and we will consider adding this to a future agenda. So those are just kind of my thoughts on it. I, I noticed last meeting, there was a lot of dialogue with people at the podium that are doing public comments. My recommendation is that you take the feedback for what it's worth and not engage.
Commissioner Boyce?
Counselor Huddle, are you, maybe you haven't had time to review this. I know your plate's pretty full, both, both of you, but are you kind of, kind of in agreement on this without recognizing the, the proper public notice? We might be in jeopardy by having the slightest exchange with the public that we're breaking at.
Well, I, I think your phraseology and Mr. Schroder, what I understand, Mr. Schroder to be recommending is to, as a general rule, acknowledge the comments from the public and, you know, at the appropriate time, look into them. That's, that's a usual standard practice. It's very often that some of the comments that they're making towards a commission are better handled at a staff level and that the commissioner would just say, you know, we've got our public works director here in the audience, we have our planning director, even the administrator. If you contact the administrator during normal business hours, I mean, that level of it. But to then, what I think he's talking about is if all of a sudden, for instance, the board just takes what essentially is an unnoticed item and tries to develop a decision on the spot on it. The other thing Mr. Schroder said, which again, I think is a good general rule to follow, is to allow staff to analyze it and bring back recommendations and, at a, at a later time versus just have someone come in and take a vote on an item that's not on the agenda. That being said, the public meetings law says that the principal topics of any meeting shall be on a published agenda. This requirement does not prevent a local body from considering other items. So when you said the slightest interaction, I think is the word you used.
Touchy, though, isn't it?
I agree. It's a case-by-case basis, but I think what, and, you know, our, our meetings are long and the public comment section is limited, but I think what Mr. Schroder's saying, listen, But I think what Mr. Schroeder's saying, listen, as a general rule to help the meetings move along, let's not, you know, latch on and take a deep dive into every public comment that comes on, particular ones. And I don't know if Mr. Schroeder wants to just interject at any time and say, "Staff will look into this and get back to you," and that might help the commission understand that it'll be looked into. But I think what he's trying to do is do his job is managing our meetings. And so I agree with his recommendation. That's a very standard, common practice. But I also think the Public Records or Public Meetings Law is flexible enough to allow the board to consider an individual comment that comes up without notice. Uh, but that's the exception rather than the rule, and I think Mr. Schroeder's trying to do a general rule.
Yeah, that's a good summary, yeah. It's, this is more of a recommendation. I don't think what you're doing is against the law or illegal, but I think from just a management practice, I would recommend that you not engage in a dialogue with public comments.
I think that's explicitly clear in the Order Number 20401 for ground rules for Board of Commissioner meetings. It's explicit in there that we should not, we will not do that. I don't know how it could have been any more explicit. And I say that's in a standing order. Commissioner Boyce?
Yeah, there's just a, there's a perception in Curry County that we, as a board, tend to hide behind these rules. So therefore, don't have to be accountable, don't have to answer the public. Uh, I'm not speaking for the public here. I'm giving my opinion on what the, often the general perception is, is that we don't have to be held accountable. Uh, it really, and I've communicated this many times, it's hard for me to, in any way, discourage the public from participation. I understand that we can't have a meeting breakdown with, you know, give and take sort of deal, but we have to follow our own rules. And there is also the perception out there that we skirt around those at times. And so, yeah, not having the public involved, I think, long-term, makes our responsibility to solve problems much more difficult. And so we need that public input. As far as the meetings, I'm just a little bit wary of hearing how we've got to have shorter meetings. We only meet every two weeks on a general meeting basis. And, uh, and so I just, uh, and we've been down this path before. I'm glad you recognize it. You certainly recognize it, Council Huddle, in the past. Maybe we need more meetings. Maybe we need, if we're determined we're going to have shorter meetings, and at least the appearance of at the expense of the public and their testimony, that just rubs me the wrong way. It really does.
We're not, I'm asking the public to look at it.
Okay, but I'm just telling you what I think the perception is. I'm not reading that in, you're right, I'm not reading that into this.
It has nothing to do with the public comments. It has to do with the behavior of the board.
But for the 18 months I've been here, there has been, uh, there has been an effort to keep the public... Hi, George, you're going to be on three minutes, okay? And if somebody drives all the way from Brookings, I don't like that serious restriction. I think if Dr. Ford or for Agnes or whatever, anyway, that's my take. That's all. Thank you.
Just, I'm sorry.
I was going to see if you wanted to...
Well, for, I guess, a comment, you know, we're talking about we need more meetings, maybe, um... No, we need to, to run the meetings better and not more meetings. The last meeting began at 10:00 AM in the morning and it ended about 3:00 to 5:00 that afternoon. And just a comment, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the source for these comments are in the State of Oregon Department of Justice Attorney General's Public Records and Meetings Manual, 2014 is the latest edition. But on pages 150 and 151 in that manual, and that's not the PDF page number, that's the number in, on the printed page in the manual, gets into public attendance and, and public comments and so forth and so on. And this, you want to see restrictions on speaking. You go up to some of the state legislature in public hearings that they have, and it's, they would not function if they did not have these restrictions. But you think we have, we're restrictive here? We're not at all restrictive here. You are limited if you are even allowed to speak at some of those public meetings up there in testimony. It is very restrictive. You could not conduct business if it was not that way. But again, this, uh, these two pages go into that, that, the public... It just starts saying the Public Meetings Law is a public attendance law, not a public participation law. And, and only, um, well, anyway, anybody interested can read them, pages 150 and 151. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you. It gets back to the law. And as I've said so many times in this 18, 19 months, the priorities become the rules. And the serious problems we have absolutely get compromised. And so it's just more of the same. That's not to suggest that through the two administrators we have had, three if you count Council Huddle, that we have made some wise and valuable corrections, amendments, uh, and fulfill our responsibility there. But when it becomes, as I have communicated so many times, a distraction to what we've got to get done, it's, uh, it's, I don't know, for lack of a better word, it's demoralizing. And I think the public is disappointed and should be, in my view. Thank you.
This country was founded and has put it at the top of the pinnacle as a democracy and runs by the rule of law. That is what has made this a great country.
And I couldn't agree more, but we're also a republic which is a representative government, and that's the beauty of the Constitution. That is the Bill of Rights. It's individual responsibility to understand right from wrong and have that moral outlook on everything we do in our lives and how it affects others.
Any other comments?
Uh, I would just say that regarding the three minutes, uh, I think most people can express their opinions and so forth in three minutes. That doesn't bother me. I also think that if they have more to go over, we could suggest that they get it on the agenda for the next meeting or speak to staff. Because I think a lot of times we're very inefficient in this area. And I'm going to point a finger at myself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't agree that we've been terribly inefficient. Perfect, perfection, no. Good, good progress. Uh, that's even questionable, but thank you.
Okay, so it is 11:40. We will recess this workshop and come back at 1:00 PM for an executive session, which is item number 10 on this agenda here to, and that would be pursuant to 192.610 subsection 2 subsection D to conduct deliberations on regards to carrying on labor negotiations. So thank you.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances. But it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity is in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
A bio blitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big, obvious things we know about. But a bio blitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, 99% of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So if there's a beetle species out there that's very important and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the bio blitz. It's a way that citizens can come here. We have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information. They're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline. And that baseline data set is what we then can use. And not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the stakeholders in that bio blitz, can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species. It's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
We do believe that in their past bio blitzes that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving or maybe struggling, but we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value. When you ask questions about why do we have these parks? And there's lots of ways to answer that question. But one of them is that the parks are these areas where we, where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these bio blitzes is the interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here working alongside professional scientists. And that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here and, uh, and they're just acting like kids out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around it.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are. And I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just saw that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forests down to the protected ocean. And it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled. And we're a little difficult to get to, but my God, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest, when the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves. And I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas. Outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all gets shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events, bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants, and we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bannon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms, and it just gained traction and people loved it.
Langways is less than 500 people. It's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh, my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now, and we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help. So we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides. And we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang the last two years, and it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have, and it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way. And it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bannon down to Brookings... When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bandon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups, knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard. It's going to take a long time, so roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
National parks are one of America's crowning achievements. After all, it was in this country that the idea of setting areas aside for preservation was born. They are a symbol of democracy and exist as places where one can appreciate the beauty and complexity of the natural world, free of human influence. In the past, national parks faced challenges brought on primarily by the industries and practices that threatened them. Today, similar challenges persist, as well as some new ones. High up in the Cascades, Crater Lake National Park remains a pristine natural area enjoyed by visitors from throughout the world. But in recent years, new circumstances have come to endanger the ecosystem of the park. Invasive plant species are beginning to spread and threaten the park's natural biodiversity. An invasive species is an organism that did not originate in an ecosystem and is often introduced by humans. In recent years, Crater Lake National Park biologists have documented a rise in the number of non-native plant species found within the park. Invasive plant species have various ways of spreading throughout Crater Lake National Park. Roads that have been built create pathways for seeds that may stick on tires and get thrown to the side of the road. From the roadways, visitors come from far and wide to see one of the world's natural wonders. With each visitor, the risk of introducing new species also increases. Many invasive plant species have evolved sophisticated methods of distribution through the development of various adaptations to their seeds. These adaptations allow some species to let the wind and even animal life do all the heavy lifting for them. As seeds needle their way through clothing and animal fur, they are carried and then dropped in various places around the park. There are many reasons why new species are entering the park at an increasing rate. One of the factors responsible are the effects brought on by climate change. Due to warming winters, the snow-dominated season of Crater Lake National Park is becoming shorter. Snowpack, that is normally around for most of the year, shortens the period of humid impacts, such as high levels of summer visitation and infrastructure maintenance and enhancements. With climate change increasing the frequency and severity of drought and lengthening the snow-free period, the factors that are disturbing the natural environment are amplifying. Snow melt, that would linger for most of the year, is melting much sooner than usual. Snowpack acts as a barrier to both plant and animal species. Native plant species have adapted to this environment and are used to completing their life cycles during short growing seasons. With the lengthening of growing seasons, native plant species are now vulnerable to increasing competition from invasive plant species. The risk of forest fires increases with rising temperatures as well. As growing seasons lengthen, so do fire seasons. Areas affected by forest fires open up new habitats for invasive plants to move in, creating areas where non-native plants can find solid footing in the competition against their native neighbors. Newly introduced annual grasses fill spaces of forests and meadows and act as a medium for fires, allowing them to spread farther and more easily than before. This means that not only are invasive plant species altering the existing environment, they create a domino effect that can speed up the process of change in the park. In the last three years, 25 non-native plant species have been discovered. With every coming season, these numbers are expected to increase. Amid growing challenges and limited resources, the invasive vegetation management team has been forced to prioritize the most aggressive species in the park. These Crater Lake National Park biologists are controlling non-native thistles from a remote area inside the western boundary of the park. These thistles were discovered late in the season, and park biologists are removing the seed heads so they will not spread farther and establish more infestation sites. Given how large an area these plants can envelop, controlling invasive plants can be a meticulous process, but it is the best way to ensure that these plants aren't able to spread further into the park. Road sides are another area of focus as they create literal highways for invasive plant species to take hold. By controlling invasive plants near the park boundary and along roadside, park biologists hope to reduce the amount of species entering and spreading in order to protect and maintain the natural state of the park.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an All-American Road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleets sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns and, as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Falweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition burned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime. For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahaats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahaats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hasida Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayusla River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes. But you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayusla River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Banden tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific Coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Banden. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria, ride a horse along the waves near Florence, pet a baby tiger near Banden, hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people. But you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day. Next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting wind, and it can create a whiteout. And that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here. There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention. Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges. You want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Unstable snow cornices can kill. Cornices are difficult to detect and can collapse at any time. Stay 100 feet, 30 meters, back from edge of the caldera. Trees can be dangerous in deep winter snow. Tree wells are large cavities around trees that can be three to 10 feet deep. People can become trapped in tree wells and die. Tree bombs are large clumps of snow and ice that fall from tree branches. Tree bombs can injure or kill a person. Use map and stay on the trails. Don't venture off-trail unless you have a plan and are prepared to rescue yourself. Search and rescue response may not take place until the following day. Stay with a group and let a responsible person know your plans. Leave a detailed itinerary with someone you know. If there is an emergency, they might be the only person who can tell the National Park Service where you are.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's Best Coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County and don't leave anything out.
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day. Next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting wind, and it can create a whiteout. And that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here. There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention. Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So you want to be aware of the edges. You want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration, immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new-designed rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the Sound of Safety.
The goal of the mountain hemlock phenology project is to take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park. This project will span several years and track the change in spring tree growth over time. We don't just want to know if the timing of spring at Crater Lake is changing. We want to know why it might be changing, so we will also be measuring snow depth around the trees. This is how you'll take your measurements in the field. First, find a branch on the study tree and focus on the end of the branch. We're only going to measure a section the size of our hand. Next, look for the buds on the branches. They are really tiny. The dried-up tan buds that look like tiny pine cones or pollen cones from last year, skip over these. You're going to be counting the tiny unopened buds. Early in the season, these will all be tan color. Later in the spring, the cone buds will turn purple and the leaf buds will become hairy. You'll use your data sheet to identify and count the buds. These are the tree's new growth. Make sure you count carefully. The scientists are depending on you. After counting the buds, help the ranger take a snow depth measurement at your study tree. Park scientists think that climate change may be affecting plant growth at Crater Lake. Mountain hemlocks are a tree species adapted to deep snow, and snowfall has been decreasing at Crater Lake. What do you predict? Will trees surrounded by deeper snow produce more or less new growth than trees surrounded by less snow? On behalf of the National Park Service and the global scientific community, thank you for helping us take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park.
How many letters?
Five letters.
Just think about what am I doing right now? Smile.
Smile?
Uh-huh. This is so easy.
Sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first test at this posted speed limit of 30 miles per hour.
By weeks and Harley bills are seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every special highway in Region 1 several times. All this driving back and forth...
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style. And so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leening, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by 5 to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration. But with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
Then we're going to the W-113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, health care, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 40 We own and maintain 45% of roads and 4 out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government, and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Did you see Allison at lunch today? I'm gonna text her, I'm gonna text Allison.
Hey, hold up, Matt's calling me, Matt's calling me. Hey, we got, hey, we got the food and we're on our way right now. Hey, who's coming, bro?
You're the one who hates that.
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and 4 out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter. Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways: keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in 20 minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know. Yeah, I know. Yeah.
When a large forest fire breaks out, potentially threatening lives, homes, wildlife, and thousands of acres of forest land, the news coverage is immediate and consistent. Interviews with homeowners, firefighters, medical aid providers, and others continues nonstop until the fire is sufficiently contained. At that point, the cameras are turned off, the interviews are over, and it's on to the next event. The images of catastrophic wildfire, with its ferocity and devastating impact on the land, hold the interest and attention of the public. However, there is an equally important story occurring on that same landscape after the fire is contained, mopped up, and finally declared out that the public seldom sees. The frequency and size of these mega fires on federal forest land has increased significantly over the last few decades. All too often, what is left in their wake is a vast sea of dead charred trees. Unfortunately, because of a maze of confusing and often contradictory rules and regulations, very little rehabilitation or reforestation occurs after these fires. The result of this neglect, in many cases, is as devastating as the fire itself. Here's why. Even in the hottest, severe fires, most of the dead trees remain standing, the wood not damaged by the fire, still suitable and valuable for lumber. But as the insects move in, within months, the dead and dying trees begin to deteriorate and decompose. Eventually, all of the economic value is lost. What is not removed will decay, add fuel to an even greater future fire threat, and in the process, release the greenhouse gases that the trees gathered and stored during the centuries they were alive. When all of the trees across the tens of thousands of acres burned in each of these mega fires are left to rot, millions of tons of destructive greenhouse gases are released into the upper atmosphere. These are the same volatile organic compounds that have been identified as some of the most damaging elements we can put into our air. In contrast, trees harvested soon after the fire is out drive the economic engine that employs people, provides revenue for the critical restoration and reforestation, and can provide dollars for local government services such as schools, public safety, health and social services, libraries, and good roads. When the harvested trees are made into lumber for homes, construction, and furniture, the carbon remains in storage instead of going up into the atmosphere. Dead and dying timber becomes a magnet for insect infestation. These infestations can be so large that they do not end with the burned forest, but progress into the surrounding green forest, killing even more trees, which then become even more fodder for the next fire. In absence of prompt active management and reforestation, invasive brush can dominate the landscape. That brush can retard and even prohibit the growth of the new forest and compound the fuel load for a future fire. When that fire does occur, the dense brush and dead fallen trees on the ground create a firestorm, burning hotter and even more damaging to the soil than the first fire. These damaged soils can repel water, lack the nutrients and organic matter needed by seedlings, and hinder the ability of new trees to grow. While mega fires can be so devastating, not all fires are bad. When the conditions are right, fire has been used for decades as an effective way to reduce fuels on the forest floor, burn back brush and dead grass to stimulate the new growth desired by wildlife, thinning out the younger, overstocked areas of our forests, and maintain the fire resiliency we seek. Controlled burning can be a powerful and useful tool, used in the right places, at the right time, by the professionals we charge with managing these forests. The desired result is to lessen the potential for the large, devastating mega fires we have been experiencing these past few decades. Recovery after mega fires is not only possible, but can greatly expedite the restoration and creation of all of the benefits of a healthy forest ecosystem. One fine example is Oregon's Tillamook State Forest. After repeated massive fires in the mid-20th century, state, county government, private companies, and even schoolchildren worked together to restore and replant over 500 square miles of burned-over landscape. As a result of those efforts, today we have prime fish and wildlife habitat for salmon, trout, elk, and owls, plus camping, hiking, and biking trails, healthy growing forests that gather and store carbon, and sustainable timber harvests that supports local economies, funds schools and local governments, and supports thousands of family wage jobs across the region. Without the vision of those state and local leaders just a few decades ago, very little, if any, of this would be possible today. Nearly every year for the past 20 years, we have watched millions of acres of our public forests burned by mega fires. We spent hundreds of millions, even billions of dollars fighting them. Yet when the fire is out, a mere fraction of the killed trees and lost value is ever recovered, with little or no effort to restore the burned landscape. What can you do? Contact your elected federal, state, and local officials. Tell them these federal lands and once treasured forests are too valuable to simply walk away. Future generations are depending upon you to take action. For more information, visit us on Facebook at Communities for Healthy Forests.
For the properly-prepared explorer, winter is a spectacular time at Crater Lake National Park. There's abundant opportunities for winter recreation, for varied skill levels, and varied experiences. Come on up to Crater Lake, it's a beautiful place to enjoy the winter. We get tons of snow, it's beautiful snow, but realize it is a national park and it is a wilderness area, so when you come up here, be prepared. We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day, next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing, you'll get driving snow, blasting wind, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here. Additionally, the entire caldera acts as a giant terrain trap. A terrain trap is where all of the snow and rocks will funnel into a single location as you go further and deeper into the caldera. It's about as dangerous as it gets down there. The slopes are so steep, in the winter, they're fully covered in snow, so if you started to slip, you'd have no way to stop yourself. It's just a straight drop about 1,000 feet down to the edge of the lake, and the water in the lake is gonna be about the freezing temperature, and it's hundreds of feet deep, so once you get in there, there's really no way to get back out. There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention. Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain, so you want to be aware of the edges, you want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here. Crater Lake Rangers and ski patrol members do perform backcountry winter rescues. We're all trained as medical providers and for search and rescue, so if you're out just a short distance on the trail, we might be able to get to you pretty quick, but if for some reason you go over the edge and you get injured, we're gonna have to assemble a technical rescue team, and it could be a long time before we get down there to get you out. You really need to be prepared to be self-sufficient, and if you get into a bad situation, you really need to know how to rescue yourself. Well, if you know you're gonna come up here for the wintertime, either to snowshoe or just to come up and visit, a few things you really want to do is you want to check the weather beforehand, figure out what the conditions are expected to be up here. You also want to look at our webcams and see what the current conditions are, what the snowpack looks like, and when you do get up here, make sure you take that extra minute or two to talk to someone from the visitor center or someone from where you rent your snowshoes, and see what the hazards are out there, what the conditions being reported back are, and then just be extra prepared, so bring extra food, extra water, extra clothing, because things can change fast out here, and you really need to be ready for it.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County: Living on the Edge.
We have these parks which are set up to protect and preserve biodiversity. That's challenging under any circumstances. But it certainly is almost impossible if you don't know what the actual biodiversity is in your park or the area that you're trying to conserve is.
A BioBlitz is a celebration of biodiversity. Biodiversity is the variety of life in an area. We don't know how much life and what types of life are here at Crater Lake National Park. The big, obvious things we know about. But a BioBlitz is where we go out and look for a particular type of organism. This year, we're looking for beetles or the order Coleoptera.
The wealth of biodiversity that are in these parks, 99% of it is something that could fit in your hand.
We can't save what we don't know exists. So if there's a beetle species out there that's very important, and we don't know about it, we can't do anything to help it. That is the ultimate goal of the BioBlitz. It's a way that citizens can come here. We have volunteers that are here who are actually giving this information. They're using their time to help the scientists build a greater picture of what kind of beetles are here in this park.
Getting this sort of baseline data of what biodiversity is there not only shows us what's there, which is just intrinsically interesting for its own purpose, but it also begins to set a baseline. And that baseline dataset is what we then can use. And not just scientists, but the general public and those land managers, the stakeholders in that BioBlitz, can use those observations then on into the future to understand if things are changing.
It's not so much about counting number of species. It's more about seeing a fuller picture of the biodiversity. And the biodiversity is the variety of different types of organisms, different types of species.
I do believe that in their past BioBlitzes that they have expanded the number of things they now had recorded from the park, but also confirmed that some of the things that were reported historically are still present. So even if it's not a new discovery for the park, it still creates another piece of data that tells us, yes, that thing still lives here and is still thriving or maybe struggling. But we begin to learn something about it. I think that has an intrinsic value to the park for its long-term future, but it also just has an intrinsic social value when you ask questions about why do we have these parks? And there's lots of ways to answer that question. But one of them is that the parks are these areas where we go to appreciate the wildlife there. And this is a way of tapping into some of that wildlife at all sorts of different levels. One of the key things besides the biology that's involved in these BioBlitzes is the interaction with the public and the opportunity to educate the public about the biodiversity around them.
The citizen scientists are here working alongside professional scientists. And that allows them not just to connect with science here at the park, but connect with the greater scientific community. It's a real positive thing. We see all ages coming here, and they're just acting like kids out searching for bugs, but they're doing real science at the same time. It's a great connection between this amazing resource and the people that live around it.
One of the things I really appreciate about our entire region is that we embrace who we are. And I think that's what unifies us. Once the timber and fishing industries collapsed, it took us a long time to get back on our feet. People didn't quite grasp the idea that once these jobs left, they weren't going to get other family wage jobs. And it crippled us.
Things were getting really dire. So we just thought that this was an opportunity to maybe look at that public land a little differently and how it could bring more dollars into our region.
The Wild Rivers Coast is so unique because there are more wild and scenic rivers here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. The scenic beauty is just amazing. There's so many different places to go, from the national forest down to the protected ocean. And it's just a really special place.
I guess I didn't really know how special it was, though, until I moved away to Portland and came back and saw all the potential here.
We're uncrowded. We're unspoiled. And we're a little difficult to get to. But my god, once you come here, you fall in love.
We just thought if we could pull people to come into this Wild Rivers Coast and stay longer and explore a little farther into our backcountry, there was a lot of opportunities for them to experience.
I think our whole future is at stake here. This area is ready to go. We just need to give it a little kick in the butt.
I'm going to be honest. When the Rural Tourism Studio came here, I was skeptical because I didn't see far enough ahead that we actually could collaborate regionally. And I'm pleasantly surprised. It's been amazing.
The Rural Tourism Studios was the first time we were able to come together as a region to talk about the future of our economy.
If we can have a strong tourism economy in this area, it's going to benefit the whole community.
We have to rely on ourselves. And I think through this program, it's sort of opened our eyes to what we could do when we work together. Community leaders really focused on three areas: outdoor recreation, food and agricultural tourism, and really building community relationships.
In our area, a lot of the food that's grown all get shipped away. And so now we're realizing that we can capture some of that local food that's grown here. The Eat Fresh and Local Action Team has hosted a series of networking events bringing together the area growers with the area vendors so that we could have more local food available to the visitors to our area. And now we're seeing more local food in our grocery stores, in our restaurants. And we have a new local food co-op.
We created a farm trail from Bannon to Port Orford. We did nine U-Pic farms. And it just gained traction, and people loved it.
Langoyes is less than 500 people. It's very small. So we have to bring in tourists. And being on the farm trail, even though it's just beginning, has really helped do that. We really want to make it a destination for anybody. My mom and I began Dragonfly Farm just three years ago. When I found out that I could grow a seed and turn that into food, it was like, oh my gosh, why wouldn't you do this? I just quit my day job, and I just signed the paper to be an official co-owner of the farm. This is what I want to do for the rest of my life and grow with the community.
Out of the Outdoor Recreation Action Team, we came up with a series of maps that show where the best places to go recreate are. We know where we're going to send people now. And we got a great map that shows all the best places to go see.
For us to get a mapping project done to this extent is pretty impressive. We're patting ourselves on the back. I don't know what anybody else is, but we're doing it.
From that, we decided that there was some places that needed help. So we came up with a mountain bike plan. And we also worked on designating a state scenic bikeway. The Outdoor Recreation Action Team was also looking at how we can make scuba diving better in this area. So we came up with the idea for a scuba fill station. So now people that want to come and dive in this area, they can dive for multiple days because they can get their tanks filled up again. When I started the Rural Tourism Studio, my business, South Coast Tours, was really small. And now we've grown to about five or six guides. And we're doing tours all over from Brookings all the way up to Coos Bay.
Overall, tourism is on the rise here. We've had a bang up last two years. And it's like a breath of fresh air down here.
My hope for the area is that we still keep that sense of place.
Loving a place to death is a big concern that I have. And it's a balance. We're going to promote tourism, but we want to do it in a sustainable way. One of the biggest reasons that this area has been so successful since the Tourism Studio is the people that are involved. We have a lot of great, motivated, smart people who understand the need to promote tourism in the right way. And it's really all about the people.
When you live in a rural community like we do, from Bannon down to Brookings, and you're strapped for cash, relationships are crucial.
As a community, I think you need to come together and find out what your mission and goals are collectively. Then you can work into smaller groups knowing that you have the backing of the whole community behind you.
As long as everybody's just super excited about it and passionate about what they're doing and they can work together, then anything's possible.
Own what you have and don't try to be something that you're not. It's going to be hard. It's going to take a long time. So roll up your sleeves and just dig in with an open mind.
National parks are one of America's crowning achievements. After all, it was in this country that the idea of setting areas aside for preservation was born. They are a symbol of democracy and exist as places where one can appreciate the beauty and complexity of the natural world free of human influence. In the past, national parks faced challenges brought on primarily by the industries and practices that threatened them. Today, similar challenges persist, as well as some new ones. High up in the Cascades, Crater Lake National Park remains a pristine natural area enjoyed by visitors from throughout the world. But in recent years, new circumstances have come to endanger the ecosystem of the park. Invasive plant species are beginning to spread and threaten the park's natural biodiversity. An invasive species is an organism that did not originate in an ecosystem and is often introduced by humans. In recent years, Crater Lake National Park biologists have documented a rise in the number of non-native plant species found within the park. Invasive plant species have various ways of spreading throughout Crater Lake National Park. Roads that have been built create pathways for seeds that may stick on tires and get thrown to the side of the road. From the roadways, visitors come from far and wide to see one of the world's natural wonders. With each visitor, the risk of introducing new species also increases. Many invasive plant species have evolved sophisticated methods of distribution through the development of various adaptations to their seeds. These adaptations allow some species to let the wind and even animal life do all the heavy lifting for them. As seeds needle their way through clothing and animal fur, they are carried and then dropped in various places around the park. There are many reasons why new species are entering the park at an increasing rate. One of the factors responsible are the effects brought on by climate change. Due to warming winters, the snow-dominated season of Crater Lake National Park...
Okay, we're back on... After our recess, it is Wednesday, July 25, 2018. It's 1:06 PM. And we are now going to go into executive session pursuant to ORS 192-610, subsection 2, subsection D.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, I would like to suggest that the board not go into executive session until we actually offer or make a consideration for offer. So for what we have to discuss, that's my...
No, no, I'm...
In my opinion, we don't have to be in executive session. And therefore, I'm talking, sir. Therefore, we can be...
You were not recognized pursuant to... We're going to continue pursuant to 192-610, subsection 2, subsection D. We're going to go into executive session to conduct deliberations. And you are being insubordinate...
Oh, not to you, yes, sir.
...to deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to go into labor negotiations.
If we need to go into executive session...
We are into executive session.
No, we're not.
Yes, sir, we are.
We haven't even heard from Commissioner Gold, sir.
Yes, we have.
You're doing an authoritative thing here. You have no right to do...
And I will adjourn, sir. I will adjourn this meeting...
Of course you will. Just like when I tried to give a fire report,
I will adjourn this meeting if you continue with your disruption.
Of course you will, just like when you tried to give a fire report, you walked out of the room.
Hold on, why don't we just take a vote on this?
We haven't even heard from Commissioner Gold.
That's what I'm saying, let's take a vote on it. Do we want to go into Executive Session?
I think for bargaining, we need to go into the Executive Session.
And we need to have some decorum from some human beings here in this meeting, too.
How about some public discussion for transparency, too?
Okay, we are going into Executive Session.
For folks that were responsible to serve.
We are in Executive Session.
Okay. Did you get that, Charles?
Yeah, Charles, you're a little quick on the switch there, but thank you.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun, to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an All-American Road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is, and what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community, with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official State Maritime Museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleets sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The Central Coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Falweather, a basalt outcroping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays, and don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hacita Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes, but you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end, and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston-to-Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific Coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria. Ride a horse along the waves near Florence. Pet a baby tiger near Bandon. Hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day, next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting winds, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here.
There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention.
Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So, you want to be aware of the edges, you want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Unstable snow cornices can kill. Cornices are difficult to detect and can collapse at any time. Stay 100 feet, 30 meters, back from edge of the caldera. Trees can be dangerous in deep winter snow. Tree wells are large cavities around trees that can be three to 10 feet deep. People can become trapped in tree wells and die. Tree bombs are large clumps of snow and ice that fall from tree branches. Tree bombs can injure or kill a person. Use map and stay on the trails. Don't venture off-trail unless you have a plan and are prepared to rescue yourself. Search and rescue response may not take place until the following day. Stay with a group and let a responsible person know your plans. Leave a detailed itinerary with someone you know. If there is an emergency, they might be the only person who can tell the National Park Service where you are.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry, and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's Best Coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County, and don't leave anything out.
We've got a lot of obvious hazards here, but I think one of the greatest hidden hazards is that the weather can change really fast. It can be a total bluebird sunny day, next thing you know, the clouds will roll in, reduce visibility to almost nothing. You'll get driving snow, blasting winds, and it can create a whiteout, and that's really dangerous to be out in, especially with the edge of the caldera right here.
There are also hazards such as avalanches and cornices throughout the park. A cornice is a formation of snow created by wind. It often forms over steep slopes and can be overhanging. They can easily be broken through if you're not paying attention.
Most of our popular skiing areas and our popular snowshoeing areas are either on or below avalanche terrain. So, you want to be aware of the edges, you want to be aware whether you're above or below avalanche terrain. It's incredibly hazardous, and we do get avalanches all the time here.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe-meeting-type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before-and-after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible, and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive... ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new design rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error, and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we are actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the Sound
The goal of the Mountain Hemlock Phenology Project is to take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park. This project will span several years and track the change in spring tree growth over time. We don't just want to know if the timing of spring at Crater Lake is changing, we want to know why it might be changing, so we will also be measuring snow depth around the trees. This is how you'll take your measurements in the field. First, find a branch on the study tree and focus on the end of the branch. We're only going to measure a section the size of our hand. Next, look for the buds on the branches. They are really tiny. The dried-up tan buds that look like tiny pine cones or pollen cones from last year, skip over these. You're going to be counting the tiny unopened buds. Early in the season, these will all be tan color. Later in the spring, the cone buds will turn purple and the leaf buds will become hairy. You'll use your data sheet to identify and count the buds. These are the tree's new growth. Make sure you count carefully, the scientists are depending on you. After counting the buds, help the ranger take a snow depth measurement at your study tree. Park scientists think that climate change may be affecting plant growth at Crater Lake. Mountain hemlocks are a tree species adapted to deep snow, and snowfall has been decreasing at Crater Lake. What do you predict? Will trees surrounded by deeper snow produce more or less new growth than trees surrounded by less snow? On behalf of the National Park Service and the global scientific community, thank you for helping us take the pulse of Crater Lake National Park.
I love walking. It's what I do. So who better to share some tips to help keep your walks safe? Wait for the signal. Take in the sights and smells till you get the go-ahead to cross. Use intersections to cross, but when you can't, remember your training. Always look left, right, left. Show you want to cross and wait for all lanes of traffic to stop, and make eye contact so you know the driver sees you. Hi there. Good human. You get a treat when we get home.
How many letters? Five letters? Just think about what am I doing right now? Smile. Smile? Uh-huh.
Sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first test at this closing speed limit of...
Five weeks in Harley Bill's are seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every stretch of highway in Region 1 several times. All this driving back and forth...
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s, and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style, and so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leening, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car, and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by 5 to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, health care, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government, and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals, and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair, or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation, because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government, and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Did you see Allison at lunch today? I'm gonna text her. I'm gonna text Allison.
Hey, hold up. Matt's calling me. Hey, we got the food, and we're on our way right now.
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter.
Okay, it is 1:48 PM. Wednesday, July 25, 2018. We have just come out of executive session. No decisions were made during executive session, but we are going to adjourn this workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
So, Sue.